You ready, Dawn?
Yeah.
Now, I'll make it older. Looks like we have to minutes.
I'm going to approve.
A motion approved in minutes. Beginning of the sixteenth. You had any corrections, Alexis?
There's just a few grammatical things if you wanted to change those, Dawn, but there are no corrections as far as the content.
We have a motion on the floor and entertain a second. I'll second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, well, I don't know if anyone's interested in going into this North Central Kansas County Highway Department's meeting. It's Wednesday, April the fourth. In Abilene, I believe.
What time?
Oh, it's in Concorde, I'm sorry. It doesn't get a time, so I'll find out what time it is.
That might be interesting.
Normally starts in the morning, doesn't it, 10:30 or 11:00?
I think so.
Well, let's find out. Michael might know.
I thought it said on my book. Does that one just say for today?
Yeah. We will be sending out a formal invitation and an agenda as we get closer to that date, so, April 4th.
Dawn, all these bills here, some of them say reprints, and do you understand them all?
Um, what Hannah said was they were, the home center was sending the bills to Hannah, but then she would double pay sometimes because of the nursing home at center, so they stopped sending the bills. Those are all the bills that Vicki shows outstanding to the county that we've never received.
Okay.
So, that's why it says reprint, is that Vicki wants to get her books cleaned up.
Did she, we have the one still here with the glass cleaner, did she talk to her about that?
Oh, yes, sorry, I might, she might have stuck that back in my box.
Okay.
So, yeah, I talked to Hannah about that, she was gonna call Vicki.
Okay.
I think they have an account out there too, so.
So, are they gonna start sending them directly to us? A copy?
No. Unless you want them to go ahead, but what was happening is sometimes Beth would scan them and send them to me, and then Hannah would double pay, and it would end up being a nightmare, because sometimes the system will catch.
They need to go one place or the other, so, it's never bothered.
I kind of wonder though if we shouldn't have Vicki, like at the end of the month, whenever she doesn't get paid, then send us, even if it's like a two month, because I think some of those Hannah said were in September.
So, do you, do you have it fixed as far as the, did you get your payments back from the ones that were paid twice?
Yeah, but Hannah will enter credit, which she catches up.
I mean, are we paying for tools, or are they expected to provide their own tools for maintenance? Because who's going to inventory the tools that we own up there?
I don't think we have any tools.
Well, right here, a jigsaw blade.
Well, a blade may be.
Yeah, I don't think we should be covering things that we have no way of keeping an inventory on, or knowing where they end up. I mean, I would mark that one, for sure.
Blades are kind of a disposable item.
Right, but I'm saying if, if they're doing their own maintenance, they can provide their own tools. Another disposable item is cleaners, and we've been charged many times for cleaners. I mean, I've never rented from a landlord that provides my cleaning supplies.
Well, Dawn, let's go ahead and Victor, you have it.
There's a few things. I brought in our write-offs for the year. Generally, the most part there, insurance write-offs, the biggest majority. There's some, a few unable to collect. And some unusual circumstances. Those come off of report, usually it's unable to collect, and we just end up, if they're immunizations, we can't send them to collections or anything, so we have to write them off, so. It's a little bit than last, less than last year, it's a lot lower than past years, because since the vax care bills, the majority of adult vaccines, they take the write-off way down, so it's lower than it's been in past years.
Do we need action on the ride off?
Um, what I'll do is I'll do a resolution, so I'll get it ready hopefully through.
This is just kind of a report of the last three years of direct services to clients. So, this doesn't include any indirect services, it's just one-on-one client visits. We're down a few procedures, but total clients were up. I know we've given a lot less flu shots this year than we have in the past. If you look at 2015, the procedures are much higher. That's when we had nasal flu, and at the schools, we gave lots and lots of it. When they took the nasal flu off the market, people don't want their kids get a shot. Or their kids don't want a shot, they were okay with the nasal spray. So, those numbers dropped off dramatically, so, and it, the school numbers keep dropping off. I think part of it's because they have to fill out a form and get it back to us ahead of time, and parents just don't, aren't real good about that sometimes, so. But overall, we've got more clients this year, just.
Individuals, is that?
Mm-hmm, that's individuals, total clients is an individual person. And procedures is what we did for them, so.
Yeah. This is nice, a good spreadsheet to look at to have a comparison.
I try to do it for a couple of years, every year, so you know kind of where we're at. So, even though we've stopped a few programs, we're still giving people in for a few new things, so. Procedures, particularly in adult health, have gone up, and that's our lab draws, I can tell you that. It's our lab draws, because we see about 20 people a month that are allowed to, so. But it's been real beneficial to everyone. The heater, the cost to fix that was $219, so it turned out better than I thought. There was a book cleared down behind there, crawled back there, and it was printed in 1996, so I'm assuming that the heater's somewhere in that age. So, it's not as old as I thought it was, but still, it's kind of old. And it's working fine with that, just was a little switch. The green car, he's still working with the component of the computer part, and he says a couple more days. But if he can't get it figured out in the next couple of days, he's gonna send that back, and he thinks it's a defective computer chip, or whatever they put in there, so, and try again. So, that's where the green car's at. The carport is supposed to be here on Wednesday, which I imagine the weather will be nice enough by then, that's fine. Let's see where I am. As far as the government shutdown, the only program we do that affects is WIC, but WIC is funded through March, so if something wouldn't get settled by March, and I'm not sure the temporary fixes will, will extend that, then WIC might have a problem.
Your WIC numbers were significantly lowered this year, do you, do you know just?
Um, I, no, we have less babies. I mean, we used to do about 30, 25 to 30 babies, and now we're down to maybe 19, 20 is the average birth. So, that takes off two, mom and baby, so, that's part of it, and I think part of it is, it's, it's, it is time-consuming to come in for an appointment, you're there at least an hour. If you have a job, you have to come in every three months and do that, some people just don't like that. We're going to, in April, well, depending on the shutdown, in April, they're rolling out E-WIC, which is like a debit card versus coming in and getting checks. So, we're hoping that will help with them, maybe working families, that they won't have to come so often that we can do some stuff by phone, and things like that, so. Hoping we made it to get our numbers up, but if we don't have babies, if our population in babies goes down, then.
I guess that's what I'm wondering, is that reflective of the population curve?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
This year?
Yes, yeah.
Births, local births compared to, because it says you had about 80 in '84, 81 in '84, the last two years, and then only 60 in those years.
Yeah, gone quite down quite a bit, so.
Is that a WIC program based March to March, is that a?
No, it is a federal, so it's October to September. So, it goes into pass-through through USDA, so USDA has already approved the funds through March, so I'm guessing the feds can't take it from USDA.
So, it's kind of like a six-month deal, huh? Must be a six-month.
Must be, I, yeah.
Okay, okay, I wondered, I wondered why that would end in March, if the.
Well.
But it's because of the.
They must have already appropriated the funds prior to, I'm guessing.
All right, yeah, probably do it in a six-month.
Hopefully, we won't have to get to that point to worry about it, but it could happen, so. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about the performance evaluations for employees. I mean, I've been here long enough that we've been this route before, this merit thing and doing evaluations and all that. It didn't work well before, I'm hoping it works better this time. The form has a rating scale, 1, 2, 3, 4, based on needs improvement and satisfactory. That didn't change, meets job requirements, exceeds, or outstanding. I think it kind of depends on your administrative, just kind of how you're, you're, how you, uh, just your style, I guess. Meets job performance is it meets standards and expectations, and they're stable and skilled. Work is satisfactory, and it's adequate, and the performance is overall average. I think we hire people to do jobs, and if they do their jobs, they're a three. I very seldom gave fours or fives in the past, because unless, unless we had a new project that somebody worked really hard on, or something like that, there are places that I would give a four or a five. But when the points were tied to the merit, like if you got 30 points, you got a 50 cent raise, if you got 20 points, you got a 20 cent raise. The supervisor, depending on their philosophy and how they rank these, can make the difference. You know, if I want all my employees to get 50 cents, I'm just gonna give them all fives and not do it appropriately. My request is that when you, when you finally finish this, and I don't know if you're gonna tie them to merits or not, but that there is some education to the department heads, so we're all kind of playing in the same field, I guess, is what I would like to say. And if you do decide to go to a merit-based system, I think that needs to be clear what the expectation is, you know. If I budget a quarter because I'm trying to be, um, think about the budget, then I can only give a merit of a quarter, but somebody else does a dollar in their budget, and so their people get a dollar. I mean, it hasn't happened for a long time, they've been that far apart, but we haven't given merit raises forever. So, I just think, I know everything's not fair in life, and everything can't be fair, but I think we should need to have some specific guidelines on how we're supposed to do it as supervisors.
Yeah, you raised some really good points.
That's just my comment on.
I think, it's, it's a subjective, that's, that's the one problem with, with merits, you know. And I guess my other philosophy thing is that, you know, some years, people do a really good job, and they get that merit raise, but then it's seemingly tied into their salary forever. You know, I guess, you know, bonuses, that's maybe one of the pluses for bonuses, because you give it this year, and you may not give the bonus next year. But if we add it on to their hourly wage, we have already set a precedence, you know, to, to keep that, you know. And so, the argument comes, can you get a demerit raise, you know? The other thing that I would point out to you, LaDonna, is that if anybody is below a three, I'm not sure why we're still employing them.
Correct, correct.
You know, if they're not doing their job, they shouldn't be here, you know.
I, I'd agree with that, but I think.
That's a tough decision to make, but it, but I, I truly believe that everybody better be at that three, or they better often be thinking about being gone.
And I think, I have a small enough department that I do, on a daily basis, they are evaluated on something, you know, if something I see is wrong, we correct it then and there, because we've had problems in the past with things going on forever. And so, try to be real cognizant that we need to talk about things as they happen, versus waiting for an evaluation period that we may or may not do. And it's easier for me, because I only have four employees, I understand, I can take the time to really go through it, versus just, you know, kind of doing the rankings. I just, I just don't want to see some departments penalized if you tie a merit to the actual number.
Yeah.
You know, I, otherwise, the numbers are good, but I just feel like we should be clear that every department has the same opportunity to maybe get the same merit if the, if it warrants it, based on what their supervisor recommends, I guess, is what I wanna say.
You know, I guess that's one of the things that, that, let's see, what, they're, I can't think what the word is they use in the federal government, they're leveled, you know, and you move up to those levels.
And you move up this pace, yes, yeah.
Yeah, you know, and that's probably one of the reasons. The other thing is that evaluation is, should be a summary of what you've been doing all year.
Right.
Supervising that individual, you know, and you should be making mental notes, or some notes of the problems that have been occurring during the year, so. It's, it's a summary, it's not a, a specific evaluation of certain time.
Right, right.
If you are giving any low numbers, the whole purpose of the evaluation is so that there's a strata. And it's not, it doesn't just come back on you, there is a level to which everyone has accountability all the way up the chain, so that when someone does get a negative mark, it's, oh, well, it's not just one person noticing this and targeting you, you know, that, it's documented, and people have at least discussed the concept, and you may not get a negative, maybe the person is just habitually late in a year, and yes, that's a negative mark, but it doesn't mean that when they're at work, they're not doing a good job, so you can weigh those things out on the evaluation.
Right, right, I agree.
But I would say, as far as the money situation, like you said about budgeting in a particular raise amount, I think that's where we need to come to an agreement and say, just like we did for this year, it was called a cost of, a cost of living increase, and no one's was expected to be above 50 cents. So, we can still cap that in the same concept, instead of calling it a cost of living, you cap it at 50 cents, and you say, you know, if there's a cutoff point, and if your point evaluation gets you above X, then you get the 50 cents, and if it's below, then you get the 25 cents, or however that develops.
Well, and I don't, I don't know if you're gonna make any decisions on merits or the valuations before we get to turn in our budgets this year, but I guess it would.
I think that we set a target date, didn't we, when we were doing that?
We're hoping to do that.
Didn't we set a target date to do the evaluation?
Yes.
You know, Al Joe brought up a point, every job I've ever had had bonuses. You might not get a raise, but you got bonuses for different.
And that could be tied to it?
And, you know, he's making a good point, that if it couldn't be a bonus, and that way, you earn it every year, or if it goes into your wages, you may not earn it next year.
Well, and, and I'm.
That's true, also.
I would sure be open to looking at something like that.
And I also have the philosophy, I mean, I love, all my girls are great, they're great employees, but if we have a new project that only affects one person, and they work extra, extra hard, that person might get a bonus, and everybody else doesn't. I think that's perfectly fair.
Justified, right.
Yes, it's justified, and the next year, it might be somebody else that has this project that they have to work on, so.
And some of the discrepancy is how long someone has been there, you know, we're doing this thing called longevity pay, but is it necessarily fair that Bob, who's been here, and I'm just using that name, but who's been here 25 years, and Joe, who's been here three years, get the same exact increase when the other person's been putting in their due diligence for three times the amount, you know, of, of work? So, I, I think we should further discuss that concept of a bonus.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to evaluations, I think they're a good, can be a good thing. I, I tend to do them more often, just internally, because we just talk about a lot of things, but.
I think it's sure something we need to discuss and talk about, because I think a bonus deal might be a better solution.
It might be, and I would, I would not be opposed to that idea. I am iffy on the merit based on points, because, again, that's subjective, and as long as we're, all supervisors are kind of trying to follow the same philosophy, then that's fine, but if not, you know.
All supervisor, all people are different, and I think.
I know.
Getting everyone to go exactly the same as your people do.
No, I don't think that should happen, but I don't.
You can also budget in that bonus amount, and it'd be a significant amount of money, but it doesn't have to be, like you said, just an increase type.
Well, like I said, it's really hard to do our budgets without some direction. Or it goes a whole nother year before, you know, to 2020 before we, we.
Normally, when, when we do the budgets, we give you a target that we're thinking about as far as the cost of living. We could do the same thing, and the target is a bonus.
That would be great, that would be great, as a supervisor, because sometimes I feel like I'm just kind of flailing out there on, on this topic.
I'm sure it needs to be tied to each department myself.
But, and that's fine.
I think we could identify so much money for the bonuses across the calendar. We're, we're really talking about several businesses.
Right.
You're a business, your, your thing is totally different than what the, the.
Exactly.
Public Works is, it's totally different from what the clerical or the elected staff is doing upstairs, you know. So, I think, I think, you know, I, I don't think that we can tie that bonus to each department, say, well, you got a hundred dollars, you got a hundred dollars. I don't, I think, I think we need to figure out some way to set that out in.
Job description, what your responsibilities are, things like that.
You know, we got this $5,000, you know, out here now, how are we going to divide it out among those that, that have gone above and beyond their call of duty?
Dawn, if you did an extra check as a bonus check, would you just, would that just go through a regular, like paycheck, just take out the withholdings and?
It'd be exactly like the longevity check.
The longevity check, okay.
Okay, I just, before you got two in the weeds with the evaluation forms and all that.
I really appreciate, that's good input. Thank you.
Other than that, I don't have anything right now.
Thank you, thank you, LaDonna.
Thanks.
Oh, yes, get your flu shot, and stay home if you're sick.
Um, did you both get a chance to look at these? I would like to just go ahead and.
Sure, we can go ahead and do it. We got some tax abatement here, we're gonna run through real quick. I believe there was three.
Yes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
The motion, I'm gonna second, is there any discussion?
The amount is.
Does she need the total, or?
Total, it's on that slip of paper.
What number did she want on there? Oh, up here. 2017, 19, 20, and 21. Oh, these are dated 2017, they need changed.
I know, it's the tax year.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay.
There's no further discussions, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
That's just, tell them, Don, we need the money, CASA, CASA, is that the problem?
I think they're just asking, requesting the payout.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Could you read that?
Yeah. Yeah, they're requesting a payout, and I assume they just hadn't gotten the check, because I see, I got one today for the water shed today.
I, I'm not sure if they're part of the distribution, or if we wait till we get that and listen to it, but-
Okay, all right. Yeah, because we got distribution checks, all right, I got one today.
Yeah, we just don't do distributions till the thirty-fourth, so we pay with the cables.
Okay.
And then, I have Deborah doing the resolution for the health write-offs, and then potentially the burn ban release, are you comfortable doing the resolution for the health department today, or would you rather wait until this?
Either way.
The health-
It just numbers.
I guess I'm a little concerned with burn ban, I'm not sure we're going to get enough moisture to-
I put in the last resolution number, but that was my question, if you'd rather wait.
I just, I really think we need to wait and see what happens, because that wind blowing like this, it could be a disaster.
Well, we'd have to do it effective eight AM tomorrow, or something like that, I don't know, I don't know, I think the wind is supposed to go down, but-
Can you just call, do a conference call?
We can do that. Very uncomfortable doing that.
Let's wait, we'll do a conference call if we need to, we'll see what we get for snow and winter.
Okay, I put the health department the number at that time, so she'll bring that down, and then I'll just do that one.
The health department resolution?
To the write-offs.
Those write-offs, one thousand dollars.
Oh, oh, okay. And my question is, what do we owe them, the CASA?
Uh, we budgeted seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand, I think.
And, okay, and is it my understanding that when they say, the donations that were given toward the Lincoln County, there was one case in Lincoln County in two thousand seventeen, fifty-five hours and seventeen hundred ninety-eight miles, did that person get paid? Is that where the, or are they just, are we just paying to facilitate the program?
We pay to facilitate the program, and then they pay however they pay, I believe they pay their cost of volunteers mileage, but I don't pay them any expense.
Mileage, not time.
But I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I believe they pay mileage.
And they're called in from the district court, correct?
Court appointed, yes.
Okay, Greg, I guess we're up.
Okay.
On Christine, I guess.
Well, I'm a chair.
Eric.
Yeah, it's blowing out there pretty good.
Is it?
I'm driving like this.
They had a jackknife semi on, I said, I don't know if it's eastbound or westbound, over by Wilson here this morning.
That's a good place for it.
Yeah, it's a tough area.
Eastwest roads, eastwest roads were tough today, Kevin.
Were they? All right, I've got a couple things I'm going to get over with you guys real quick. First off, a little project, we had a garbage disposal go bad, I took that over to Midwest Tool to have it rebuilt, which I've done in the past, we're looking at an expense of three hundred forty dollars versus two thousand twenty-five dollars for a new one, so, there's that. Another thing we're discussing today, and I'll give you some quotes from Lincoln Building Supply. You guys need one, but, we've got a list of material, with the new flooring we've got, the color selected, we're not matching the existing paint, I guess you'd say, so we're looking at repainting. Visiting with Eric, it was brought up to possibly have Lancaster's paint this, paint the area, the only problem with that is, that looks like it could be a two-week delay, and actually, today, they have started tearing up the floor, begun the project, so, it'd be kind of a two-week delay, plus or minus on that. So, kind of took it to our own liberties to go up here and get some prices locally on paint and materials to do this job. We have employees that will put the labor into painting this stuff, it's kind of important that we paint this, I guess, I don't know the proper term, Eric, but it's kind of a clear coat, epoxy, or something they've got to put down, we have to try to get it painted before they get that coat down.
It's what they call a skim coat.
Skim coat.
They're familiar with that, that goes down to making it adhere better to the floors.
You said, you were talking about having the current contractor do the painting, but then you said employees, are you referring to Lincoln Park Manor?
Yes, our crew's going to, would like to do the painting, keep this project moving to avoid a delay.
So, you're saying you're not going to utilize someone else, or someone that's there?
You're not going to bid it out, you're just going to-
Prefer not to.
What you're saying is that-
They're going to paint during their shift, is that the concept?
That would do, if we were to bid it out, like you were talking about there, it would take probably a week to prepare that bid, then we've got to bring it to you to approve, approval, and then they could start ordering materials, so you're at least two weeks out from doing, getting the work done.
And it's considerably higher than twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Yes.
It would be much higher.
I guess, you know, I think, I think paying for materials and you doing the labor sounds like a pretty good deal to me.
The other way I look at it, is, is right now, except they've already started tearing some of the flooring up, if we can get in there today, get the paint, get started, we're better off, we're going to be in the long run.
You're just going to do it as they do the rooms, or they do it.
Right, correct.
Stay ahead of them, I think, on that.
Exactly.
I guess I would concur with Terry, I, number one is, we're keeping the business local, both labor and materials.
Well, you're probably talking twenty to bid it, aren't you?
I, I don't know if twenty would be that high, but we're ten thousand, you know, maybe fifteen. But, the nice thing about doing it that way is, everything is under one contract, and doing it this way, it's quicker, they wouldn't do it, for one thing, and, and the material and labor would stay local, that way, if they ever need additional-
To repair something, it'll match.
-paint, they can walk down the street and get it, where if it was through the contractor, it could be someone else's brand of paint, and then you'd be hard-pressed to find a match for it.
Kind of a normal procedure when you have an empty room.
It is, it is normal to repaint.
Right. Lincoln Park Manor is okay with absorbing the cost of labor.
I think, I think it's a great idea, I feel, in the same as well.
Do we need a motion, Don, you think?
If that's up to you.
I would say to approve this, if you guys want to take on the labor, I think that's your responsibility, and we really shouldn't have any say in that.
Yeah.
If we want to approve this bill, I would say that's-
And that's, and that's a rather high bill, just heads up, guys, we kind of threw this in, because when we get to the dining room, it may need an extra coat of paint to cover.
I, and I also think that this is a bill that comes out of the web fund, because this is part of the renovation of the nursing home.
I would not agree with that, I think that we've already bid and set a dollar amount, which is still flexing because of potentially replacing the electrical to the city, that portion of it, I wouldn't say we tack this on to that, I think it just needs to go under bills that we're already paying, we have, we have that money set aside already, out of the, even if it's from the capital improvement, I would say that's a better option, if not from the budget, that's the line item in particular to the nursing home.
I'm hopeful that, with the work that we're doing, the maintenance costs are going to go down for a little period of time here, so.
Well, this may very well go within that realm of how much we were potentially saving with what you guys came up with.
I think we had excess funds this year, I think we can do it out of the maintenance fund, I really do.
Out of the maintenance budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
You're not going to buy all this at one time, we're going to have bills coming in here.
Correctly, I agree.
Weekly.
Yes.
And I think that, just to keep track of everything, I think we can just do it out of the maintenance fund.
Can we also talk about what system we need to have when you are charging something like this? Because we just had a conversation briefly before you were here about, we're getting double billed sometimes, if you send us one of these, let's say you bought a couple gallons of paint, it comes in, we pay it from our office, then she may send it separately from the store.
So, Hannah called us last week, and we're not going to send those bills, but we are going to keep a copy of them in case you have questions.
So, the store itself is going to be sending them?
Right, so, the guys bring them back down to us, which is why then we scan them up here, because oftentimes, the guys write reason, more than the little subject line they write, so if Don or Hannah ever has a question, we'll at least have that on record, and we can go back to it and say, yeah, this was for this.
But the ones that we pay will be coming from the store.
Right.
That way, we know, they correspond with us, we send the payment, you guys just keep your own records.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I guess we don't need action on this, we can wait until they send us a bill, and we'll just know that when we see paint bills, that's what it's for.
It'll just come in like these other bills do, I think it's fine.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Now, now it's my turn. Like you said, they're getting started up there, they're stripping old tile off, pulling toilets, that kind of stuff. The schedule has it that all the tile will be removed from the wing that we're working on by the twenty-sixth, and then, we start the process of removing the adhesive, the black stuff that's on the floor, and then we've got to skim coat it. Well, in the test room, we pulled out the tile, we found a crack that parallels the wall, it's about that far into the room, and it's, looks like it's on the same thing on the other side, what it is, is a cold joint, where they poured the slab in three sections, and they didn't pour it under the wall like you normally would, the corridor wall, so we have a crack we need to repair. So, what I asked the contractor to submit a surprise on that, and he came back with a price of thirty-two eighty-two and eighty-one cents, and I could, I have the form here of the change order, what that boils down to is approximately eight dollars and fifty cents a foot, that they have to clean out the joint, inject a polyurethane bonding compound, and level with the floor, and then, they have to repair the concrete on either side of the crack, and they've got to do that for three hundred and eighty-six feet. So, I think that is, in my opinion, that's a low price, so, I was pretty pleased to see that. We've got to do that before we put the new floor in, so, that's the reason why I asked to piggyback on Greg's appointment with you, is to deal with this issue now, so we can decide what to do next. Like they said, the tile they picked, they picked a kind of a gray color, two different colors, one for the corridor, one for the rooms.
I have a question, before you continue, this has our, this has our original contract sum at four hundred ninety-three thousand, it has this additional change order in the amount of three thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars eighty-one cents, where is the change as far as what you guys had come up with, changing the-
Next page, that's where the number came from. And I'll show you on-
No, you're talking about an addition here, I'm talking about the reduction.
Oh, we haven't got that settled yet, they had shown a reduction in that meeting, but they had pulled out some things that we believe should stay in there, like for instance, the room one eighteen had multiple panels in there that were worn out, and they had taken that out, and we think that, to protect you, should stay back, should stay in the contract, so we asked them to review that and get back with us on that. To answer your question about that electrical thing, how it started out was that, when we were working on the plan specs, we were talking about multiple uses in the future for that building, and one of the things that brought up was individual control for the rooms, because if you had several businesses in that, in that wing, they're going to want to have their temperature controlled by them, so, that involves a little more electrical than what you've got capacity now. I checked and found out that most nursing homes of the physical size you have, your physical plan, runs about twelve hundred amp panels, but you've got an eight hundred amp panel. To give you an idea, in, in production of panels, they go, they normally start out with about fifty amp separation, so you go from a hundred to a hundred and fifty to two hundred, and then at two hundred, they go, start going at two hundred amp, so it goes from two hundred to four hundred, to six hundred, to eight hundred, at eight hundred, they go, there's a four hundred amp difference, so you go from eight hundred to twelve hundred. So, we're right in that area where we're bouncing between those two types of panels. If we go back to the eight hundred amp panel, that'll take care of all your needs right now, not a problem. If you were in the future to bring in people who wanted to change the heating and air conditioning, and control it themselves, then you're going to need more power, maybe up to a thousand amps, but you can't get a thousand amp panel, they only come eight hundred or twelve hundred, so you go to the twelve hundred and you back it off with your breakers on the inside. So, what this, what we're looking at is, is bringing it back and not think about the future needs, but deal with the needs right now, of which would be eight hundred amp, and that changes your auto transfer switch from your generator, if the power goes out, that transfer switch immediately kicks in the generator and starts generating power, well, that transfer switch has to back down also, if we're going to back down, so, and then all the conduit and wiring that, sizes that change because of that amperage, all change, that's what we're talking about now. They had to add in two other things, one, to take off, and by the way, Greg, I did get ahold of the fire marshal, they wouldn't let me talk with your inspector, but they'd sent me to one of their code enforcement officers, and we can't take the sheet rock off if we do smoke dampering in that area, so any penetrations need to be sealed.
Sealed, and we'll be, we'll be coated.
Do we not have to phone the beams then?
Nope, because of the sprinkler.
Okay.
In the code, in the code, there's some gray area, let me see, one part says that, one part, it's in chapter five of the code, one part says that it has to be sprinkled, or you have to have that sheet rock barrier down there, whether you sprinkle it or not. The other one says you can take that sheet rock, it's an exception, you can take the sheet rock off if you seal all the penetrations, and I'm not sure how we get, I didn't want to bring it up, but how are we going to do the pipe tunnel, that's the one thing I worry about.
That's always, that was always a thing to me, Eric, because even that mechanical room with the sheet rock ceiling, but your tunnels were not.
Yeah.
So, that was one of the other things. The only other thing I would suggest is, and it would turn that into a confined space, is to put some protective doors over those.
I was thinking of something like a cement board on hinges, that would do like this, and you cut the openings for the, for the pipe, and then you can just put smoke seal around the air wall.
Around the exterior of that.
And then, if you ever had to get in there, you can open those up and then get in, but anyway, that, we're off the subject there, but that was one of the items on there, and the other one was the water softener situation, so, we're trying to get those down to where you get some significant money back, but make sure to keep in things that you really need, like replace those worn-out panels, so, we're working on that right now, I was hoping to have something bring to you today, but I didn't get a response.
There are going to be things that reduce, reduce the cost, and there are going to be things that make it more, you know, you can't-
This is a sixty, building, a sixty building, and a lot of stuff is hidden, and when we go to take things off, we're going to find it, and there isn't any-
Is there a crack in the tile, where you found this crack in the, in the substructure in the cement?
That's right, what it did, yeah.
So, it's not moving, it has, it was a settling issue then?
Okay, yeah, it, it was, like this is your wall, and it's just an inch off your wall, and you've got a vinyl coat that comes down, that comes out about a half inch, so, there was only a half inch of tile exposed from- So there was only a half inch of tile exposed from, from that crack. So what was happening is that tile was moving underneath that coat, so it never showed up in the floor. So when we stripped it off, there it was. And it, it was just as straight as an arrow.
Cold joint.
Yep.
Yeah, it's really not an actual crack. It's kind of the way they poured the concrete, is what you're seeing there.
What we call a cold joint. When you pull, pour this slab and it sets up, and then you pour this slab and it sets up. And you pour the slab in, it sets up. Those joints right there are called a cold joint because they're not interconnected. You probably should have interconnected them, but they're not.
But I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is this change order is, that's nothing more, it's, it's not structural. It's not going to solidify the foundation. It's not going to change anything. It's basically.
Going to keep the tile from separating. That's it.
There's no, there's no subfloor go, whatever you're scraping off as far as an adhesive, the new tile's going right on top of that?
No.
So you are doing a subfloor?
Well, no, it's not a subfloor. It's called a skim coat. But we're taking that black tar off as much as we can. Then we'll put a skim coat, which is a, well, slurry seal of concrete is what it is. And.
And that's not enough to patch or in the cracks?
It's not structural at all.
Doing real thin.
Yeah, it's, it's like an eighth of an inch thick. And the, the reason for that is to give a, a better adhesion of the tile, new tile to your existing floor. And we've got a environmentally safe stripper that we put on top of the adhesive to take it off. And it'll take it off probably eighty percent. And then what's left, we put this skim coat over which adheres to that well. And then the new glue we put on will adhere well to that skim coat. And then the tile goes on top of that. So when you're done, you got something that's not going to pop up and he's going to have to deal with.
Or that stuff seeped through.
Or the, or the black stuff seeped through. The black stuff is technically an asphalt. And it doesn't have any fines in it or anything. It's mainly oil. But.
It sticks.
It's sticky. And it will leach through the joints if you don't cover, or you don't strip it completely off. So that's what we got planned there. That change order you're talking about, I hope to bring that to you maybe next Monday or Monday after that. The end of the week, or end of month. So we get everybody agreeing to do everything.
You said this was three hundred and some feet?
Three hundred and eighty-six feet as well.
Isn't that significantly more than what they were, than the linear, linear footage they were doing for the actual?
Space fit, yes.
For the doorways?
Yes.
So that price is?
It's three hundred and eighty feet. That's the difference.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm saying the original cracks that we were repairing were the doorways. And how many, and how many linear feet was that?
I don't have that number on top of my head, but this is quite a bit more. If you were to imagine just an inch inside this purple corridor all the way across. We're dealing with some of it in here already, but that's what we're talking about. Plus, we don't know what we're going to find in the laundry room.
So the linear feet that we're talking about here for the three thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars eighty-one cents is almost the whole length of the corridor?
Yes, it is. It is true.
On the inside, not, not the doorways.
And it's on both sides, on the walls.
On both sides?
Yep.
So that three hundred feet is for both sides, a hundred and fifty feet each, or a hundred and?
Well, actually, one side is shorter than the other.
But the original bid that you gave us from, from your firm, it was just, so now we're doing each doorway and that one whole crack that. But the doorway quote I thought was almost twenty thousand dollars just to do those doorways.
Well, I think some of those, some of those were different cracks, some of those.
Yeah, we have three different types of cracks.
Just the, I'm talking about just the ones on the doorway. They were, they were, you had three different qualifications and it was the smallest one. I think it was about, I think it was a quarter inch or less as far as the gap. And it was for each doorway, which doesn't equal the three hundred linear feet because we were only doing doorways, not the whole length of the corridor. I'm just wondering what that, I, I, if I remember right, it was close to twenty thousand dollars just for that portion.
Sure, that's correct. Somewhere, I might have it in my other folder. The, what we call the schedule of values. That's what the contractor Smith says so we can verify a pay request.
If I remember right, the doorway ones were the smallest cracks and they were a quarter inch or less, I think, is what we talked about.
I'm looking for that schedule of values so we can answer the question. Concrete patching, crack repair joint is twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Twenty-eight hundred just for the doorways?
Twenty thousand is twenty-eight hundred.
For the doorways?
Yes. And expansion joint, doorways and expansion joint.
Which is, that's the same process then?
Similar. We have three different approaches to our cracks depending on where they're at. The concrete patching is almost five thousand dollars. Our flooring was ninety-five thousand seven hundred.
The new floor?
Yep. And the base where that goes about seven thousand. They've got fifty-one thousand dollars for demolition of old equipment. That covers everything from mechanical to, you know, electrical and all that that's in there. You never, what we don't know, you know, we can figure material costs fairly accurately. What we don't know is the labor costs. You know, they, you know, they can say that it takes four men ten hours to do the work. Or it can take three men twelve hours to do the work. And, you know, there's a difference there. So that's what we don't, that's the unknown. But yeah, to answer your question, we're about twenty-eight hundred, almost twenty-nine hundred dollars for the crack repair as bid. And this is quite a bit more footage than know what was on there. I, I really, you know, we've been really careful on these change orders. Been very studious in trying to, to make sure it's best for you. Not for the contractor, but for you. And that's why we haven't submitted the electrical one yet. And this one I think is, is very reasonable.
Is the electrical one going to be inclu, like inclusive with the change for the city for the?
The city part of it, it caught everybody off guard. We, nobody knew. We talked with the city about power requirements and everything.
Prior to the?
Prior to the bid, yeah.
So when did they come back and say they'd like to see that?
When we had that meeting in December.
They came to the meeting?
Yeah, they were at the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, they were saying ten thousand dollars. Where are you coming with that? And, and, you know, I'm not trying to put anybody down, but in my experience with these things, that's usually a cost that they figure into your monthly billing. And so I don't know where they're coming from.
Or the fact that you had prior, like you discussed it prior and it wasn't brought up until?
Well, a normal procedure is we, we call the utility companies and tell them we're working on this project and we're looking at doing this. Is there anything the city needs or anything that we need to do for the city? And my engineer turned to me and said, where are we coming up with that ten thousand dollars? News to me. He said, well, no, I talked to them. They never said boo about it. So between the time when we call them and discuss the project with them in that meeting, they decided that they wanted to charge the county ten thousand dollars.
So is that something mandatory for now or can that be done in the future? I mean, if we're going to sell that building, then?
And what it is, is they're replacing the old, what they call tubs, their old transformers on the pole with new ones. And that's.
But they're underground based.
And, and they're ground based. So it's, it's going from the pole down to the ground. And a ground based transformer is more expensive than setting up on a pole. There's enclosures you have to put around and keep people safe from touching the wrong things. And they got to put a pad down and all that stuff.
But it's not a necessity for things to function after we get this project done?
It's a necessity. We have to put some sort of transformer in there. Either on a pole or on the ground. They want to put it on the ground.
I think they're, what they're looking at is how old that setup is.
And the H frame is, is perbed up. It's in bad shape.
We had one similar that where I lived and they redid it.
I just, I just think you have an argument with them on being charged upfront. But, you know, I.
Something to be negotiated for.
That, that was something that we were completely unaware of. And everybody was unaware of until the city came in, but.
You know, as one of those deals is going to be done, it ought to be done in conjunction with the project.
Yeah, your, your transformers up there are, are old. And if they're going to go out, you'd rather have a.
You know, the condition of the wood and the H frame is a two-year.
It's not. And my understanding was that if we delayed it, we could look at, be looking at possibly higher expenses for that because you'd have to bring your electrical contractors back in to tie into a.
Right. A new panel, a new transformer.
Who owns the transformer?
They do.
The city. So then why would the landowner pay for the, for the city property?
You generally pay it on your bill.
Yeah, it's usually, you know, amortizes out on your billing, the cost of that.
Can be, or that you can pay it upfront.
Or pay it upfront.
Yeah.
It's just that.
If they're industrial areas, they're getting more power, they're going to pay a little more for those transformers for that power that they need.
Yeah. So it, it just, so that, we're, we don't have any say in that, so that's a conversation I think the city and the county ought to have.
So how soon are we looking at that in a timeframe wise? That that needs to, the transformers, that that needs to be decided?
Well, like I said, I hope to be able to bring everything but that to you before the end of month. So those guys can't order stuff and get it coming. It takes a while to get those panels coming.
What was the total number of days on the project? I'm just saying, I mean, we do have a limited amount of time.
Yes, yes, and they're aware of that.
Right.
They're aware.
They'll have weather issues for a couple of months there on work.
Well, outside they will, for sure. That's why they're, they're wanting to do the interior work right now. So they can get that done. I don't have the date. I'm sorry. Send another file. Excuse me, I found it. Two hundred and seventy days. From when we start, when we signed the contract and that was the eighteenth of October. We don't have a penalty clause if they go over on this because of the unknown nature of things going on here. We made a decision not to do that, but we're going to try and keep them to that two hundred and seventy days. And they want to do it.
Yeah, I think it's sufficient for what they're doing.
Well, for them, they would make more money the quicker they got done, so.
Does this change order have an extension in time?
No, they, they said no more days.
Zero days.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked that too. And they said no more days.
Well, that's good.
If we can get it signed quickly, so. I'd maybe have the chairman sign change order number one.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Kyle, a second. Is there any more discussion?
How many change orders are we looking at at this point?
I have no idea.
Get the remodel and there could be.
I don't foresee anything, but you know, when we go to take out.
Well, we do have one on the floor for the electrical. There will be, there's definitely one coming.
There's one coming, yeah.
And possibly on the softener or on the water treatment.
And I might lump that all together. But, you know, when we go to take old stuff out, you know, sometimes pipes break and we've got to put more pipe in.
We don't have to replace the sheet rock. That'll be a takeoff?
Yep. That's eight thousand dollars savings. And don't do the water softening business. That's about, that's several thousand dollars there.
I was thinking it was like six.
The, yeah, it's around actually eight thousand seventy-five.
Yeah, I was saying both of them are eight thousand dollar ones.
But we were going to go ahead and put the pod on.
Yeah, we're going to put a pod there.
Right. And I think that's in that verbiage that they'd sent us, so.
So there'll be.
Yeah, the only thing we've got is that room.
The sprinkler room.
Yeah.
I understand that. I just, I have a problem with the concept that we may not even own this building in a few years. We're putting in a brand new floor to not even know what it's going to be used for. And now we're patching a crack of concrete. It sounds to me as if it came from the settling of the building. It's not currently moving. It wasn't even noticeable in the top surface layer of the flooring. So to me, you know, we can tack on a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there for every little aesthetic fix that anyone can imagine. And, you know, without having a game plan ahead of time, which.
There's no way, no way to do that.
And then a remodel, you run.
Well, this, it doesn't necessarily concern you. You know, you're doing your part of the job as far as figuring out the, the logistics of how things are going. The commission on a two to one vote voted to have a new floor at ninety-five thousand dollars, which I don't see as justified. And we don't know the purpose of the building. And as far as we're concerned, the new owner of the business is moving the tenants out of there within, you know, a timeframe of maybe we're looking at two years or so. So.
Possible.
Right. And with that up in the air, I felt like the ninety-five thousand dollars for flooring was a waste of taxpayer dollars. So I'm sorry, I'm not going to approve things that have to do with just the aesthetic look of the floor.
Throw something out there. It's not just aesthetics as far as what he's bringing to you. That's also going to affect the warranty on your ninety-five thousand dollars.
That's what I was going to say. It won't warrant. Stuff the silver, build over a crack.
It's a necessary thing. Just because it has a cracked tile, you don't know if the tile was.
Yeah, the tile manufacturer says it's not. I had nothing to do with it.
Your point is well received in the process, but I wasn't for the process of replacing the floor because I, you know, it's, it's one of those things.
Have a motion or a second. I'm going to get a call for a vote. Paul, as in favor, say aye.
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 There's three of them. And I'll, I'll get their signature. The reason I do three is everybody has original then, when it's all signed. So for your files, you'll have an original, not a zero copy. And that'll be the way I'll do all, any change orders we have. Yeah, I Friday got a word back from the code people, the Fire Marshal.
Going to ask you that after the meeting. Glad to hear that. That's good. Money saved.
She said, you know, I understand what you're, what you're saying. And I understand what the inspector says, but I'd be willing to let you take the sheet rock off.
Please sign off on it for me.
Yes.
The thing I want is a signature on it when the inspector.
That was Rachel, incidentally, was the last.
I'll see if that's written down.
So. Thank you, Greg.
I have one other bit of news, guys. Visiting with Dennis Bergart at Lancaster's. He's probably another week out on the fire door estimate for you guys. I was hoping to bring that today, but he doesn't have all of his information in yet, but.
Where's that company?
They're in Salina.
And the other one was from Salina as well?
The other one, out of Wichita.
The other one. They work for Street. They're a subcontractor for Street.
This one you're talking about from Salina?
Yeah.
But the thing that you already gave us came from Wichita.
Wichita, correct.
Okay.
Lancaster did the health nurse's office when they expanded it years ago.
Yeah, and they've done more as a prime contractor for me. They do good ones.
I think probably the only reason they weren't prime is because the bulk of the work was electrical.
Exactly. And they just decide who's gonna be the prime. Street took it, so.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Happy paying.
Kaylee Ann, I guess we're ready for you. You're next on the agenda. What? He's got her. They're not, he probably gonna have them signed.
They haven't been signed, no.
The resolutions? So does this abstract total not include the abatements we approved today from two thousand seventeen, I suppose? Because it was another couple thousand dollars. Well, those were, those were from the last year, but they weren't approved until today.
No, we're doing twenty seventeen currently. She's, did you give them twenty sixteen?
No.
Yeah, that's twenty seventeen.
This is from November, am I reading this right? From November first, twenty seventeen through January eighteenth, twenty eighteen.
I don't know that it went through. Yeah, yeah, it must have.
Because we just approved several thousand more, so that.
No, because I haven't done those yet.
Yeah, I just need to understand the process here. What was that total we abated today? Here it is. Two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five.
Eighty-eight, sixty-six.
Oh, sixty-six.
Twenty-two, thirty-five point sixty-six.
So when you have an outstanding balance on here from last year's original taxes, the escaped, what does that mean?
That's like added, added on. And I don't know why it's called escaped instead of added.
Okay.
It's just how our comp tech.
Added because of maybe new purchases or new?
Or you bought something three years ago and didn't tag it till yesterday, then that's all added or escaped.
Okay. And so the outstanding is that unpaid?
Unpaid. Of course, we haven't collected second half yet. That won't be until May. So we're well, we're well over.
Okay, okay. Is that typical? What, what have we decided, Don? Weren't we talking about a tax sale? We, didn't we discuss, we haven't had one in what, like seven years? And we're, I thought we were talking about that.
I think we've never discussed.
We might have talked about it, but that's up to the county attorney to decide when there's enough to make it worth all the process they have to go through.
There's a lot of advertising expense and.
Trying to locate people.
Three resolutions.
I just did one for Don and one for Matt.
I'd move to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash oh four. Be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Lincoln County, Kansas, designating the following financial institutions as depositories of all monies of Lincoln County for the year two thousand eighteen. Bank of Tuskegee, Lincoln, Kansas, Citizen State Bank and Trust, Lincoln, Kansas, Bennington State Bank, Sauvignon Grove, Kansas, Farmway Credit Union, Lincoln, Kansas, Wilson State Bank, Beverly, Kansas, and State Municipal Investment Pool.
Have a motion on the floor to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash four. Have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion heard. Two other resolutions, are there any? Have two more resolutions. Resolution two thousand eight dash fifteen.
Oh, five, too.
Oh, five, I'm sorry. Authorize the Land Bishop's Lincoln County Treasurer to develop and implement a cash management investment program for the handling of monies and the custody of Lincoln County, Kansas for the year two thousand eighteen. Money shall be invested as set forth in state law. And the investment program shall be conducted in a businesslike manner without preferential treatment of any person, firm, or corporation. Liquidity and maturity of all invested monies shall be in such to permit the prompt payment of all financial obligations of Lincoln County Treasurer in Lincoln County.
I so moved up two thousand eighteen oh five.
Have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? I'll second. Is there any further discussion?
My issue with those, both of those resolutions, but particularly that one, when we get a statement as far as you always give us the interest, interest earned for the quarter, I've never in a year seen any balances, any total balances for any of these funds. So that, what that means to me then is unless I go through the, um, what is your title, Don? The, um, Public Records? Freedom of Information Officer, excuse me. Unless I do that, then the board, as far as what's been presented all year, we've never seen any totals. So we've, we've not.
Don't we publish quarterly or something?
The Treasurer's Office publishes cash balance quarterly.
Cash balance. In the paper quarterly.
But your cash balance doesn't entail all of the funds. And so, you know, I, what I would have to do.
Okay, it entails all of the funds. Are you talking about bank accounts?
Uh-huh.
Okay, because it doesn't.
Okay, you're calling a fund how we, how we qualify each line item according to where, okay, I'm talking about.
Each account total.
Accounts, right. So for each account, if I wanted to know, you know, if I wanted to see the transition, um, I would have to figure out what the interest is, look at the interest collected, multiply that and get the total amount of what's in there, so.
But you realize those change a whole lot daily.
Right, but we're not even getting it quarterly as far as what that, you know, what that total may be at any given time. So. I guess I'm, I'm not sure. You know, I haven't talked with other treasurers to know if that's something that they continually update the board on, but.
We're only required statutorily to give you the interest earned.
I know. And Lincoln County is pretty infamous for doing the bare minimum of what's required statutorily. So I'm just questioning it because it's just something that you wonder, you know, when we have, I, I understand we have restrictions. We can't just invest in anything that we want and go for all or broke, you know, that's, that's the whole point. However, um, we have things like the web fund. And so how, how is the board supposed to receive the information unless they request it specifically each time to know, you know, this is the balance of the web fund, then we took out this amount to pay for the nursing home renovations, and this is the new balance? We're not seeing that. All we're seeing is, oh, you made this much interest on it. But that doesn't tell me anything, because like you said, the interest is going to be variable at any given time. So I can't even really calculate a total from knowing the interest for the quarter. See what I'm saying? That's my discrepancy with it. I feel like if we are charged as a board to have financial responsibility, we should know where the money is at all times, not just see how little we made. That's not your fault. I'm just saying. I'm saying that sarcastically, but, um, that, that's my qualm with it. I feel like every board of commissioners should be concerned with what the to, the totals are in, in all of the, the accounts, not just what the interest is.
So my question for you, if I can ask this, is like where her interest that she's giving you, if she put a column, if she put like whatever the ending balance was on the end of that quarter date?
Yeah, that'd be great, because then every quarter we'd have the new balance. And I, I understand you can't print that out daily. No, not a balance sheet total. That's, that's a lot of numbers.
For the accounts.
Right. If we added another column and balance, you know, then we'd know the ending balance. And we can have that on record four times a year. That would be great.
Okay, I'll call for a vote on resolution two thousand eighteen dash five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two thousand, resolution two thousand eighteen dash six. Board of County Commissioners, Lincoln County, Kansas hereby pass a resolution on January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen to allow the Ambitious Lincoln County Treasurer to invest idle funds that she sees feasible in Lincoln County banks for investments.
I'll immediately adopt two thousand eighteen six.
Have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion?
Um, my only question is, who do you consult with or confer with when you make those kinds of decisions as to where to get your CDs or for what length of time to invest, or who, who do you consult with?
Well, if there's an issue, we have a Treasurers Association, but for the most part, I print out the deposit rates and see who's giving the best return and go that way.
Just from the banks that we listed? You compare all those, those banks? So when you determine a length of time, how do you determine that?
I can't go over two years. So there's, there's nineteen-month is about the only thing that's a decent rate right now.
Nineteen. For example, last year at this time, when I first got on the commission, you and Mr. Wallace were talking about some CDs you had purchased with the web fund money. So is that a discussion that you just have individually with commissioners or?
That's my decision. You just signed the resolution to make that my decision, to make the most money I can for the county.
Well, that's my question. I mean, who you're consulting with on, on those types of decisions?
The banks and making my decision.
So last year at this time, when you and Mr. Wallace were discussing that as far as the web fund money, is that just, you know, you would choose one of the three people just to get their input or?
No, most generally I just make the decision on what is the best return. I may ask you how much I could invest, how much you're gonna spend, but that's my decision.
And all of the web fund money is considered an idle fund, an idle, is that idle, idle fund?
Idle is mostly the county free money, but yes, it's a fund that is separate from the county money.
Well, it's idle because it's not being used for expenses regularly. It's basically investable. So do you have plans for, I mean, what, where is?
I'm working with the bank right now. There's an eighteen-month jump rate for one point seven four, but they have not confirmed that I can get that.
Because they have to check statutorily.
Because I'm county, county government.
So they'll do that research for you? The banks will do that research for you?
They'll tell me if they'll give me the rate or not yet.
Some of the rates they offer from labor private individuals, they're not.
Yeah, for new money.
So it's like something that you see advertised, so then you call in and see if that's available for, you know? So the wind power, I see there are three separate CDs. Is that one new that has no earned interest? Is that?
No, no. It just hasn't. Is it Citizens?
It's Bank of Tuskegee. There are two at Citizens and then one at Bank of Tuskegee.
It probably will draw next month, I'm assuming. I think, I think Citizens does quarterly and Bank of Tuskegee does twice a year, I believe.
So this is just the quarter? It's not anything earned in this CD prior when you give this report?
It's just the quarter.
And the money market account is where the, the principal balance is, basically? And so then I guess what I'm getting at with this whole line of questioning is, at any given time, if the Board of Commissioners decides that they want to spend two million out of that fund, where is the communication to know that you already have ninety percent of it invested? They can't be withdrawn.
I can't, I can't invest that much because I know that you could spend and that you're getting ready to possibly spend some money, so I don't tie it all up.
How do you know that?
Because I've been listening to commission meetings and I think something's gonna be for the nursing home coming out of that fund.
Most of it has different maturity dates anyhow, then. It kinda rotates.
Staggered.
Well, that's my question. I mean, if, if you, basically if we wanted to put all of it in CDs, we can, we have that capability.
At one time, the money market was paying more than the CDs, wasn't it?
Why, we only have a few CDs now. We're just starting to build.
Well, no, that's very unfortunate that the state puts those kind of stipulations on it because we could be self-funding certain things that otherwise we can't.
If there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote on resolution two thousand eighteen dash six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Goes on. Okay, Lee Ann, you have anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
Morning, Earl.
Good morning. Is there anyone out there?
I think it started, yeah, it's coming down pretty good. It's a little when we got here. I have a an authority to work contract. An authority to work contract for high-risk rural roads, this was on the, uh, the first round of the three-year project that we did several years ago, and this will be for the eastern one half of the county. And they received four bids. And they ranged from a hundred and three thousand to a hundred and sixty-four thousand, and they chose the low bid, which was the same contractor that we had on our last year's project. If you guys approve to sign that and then get it back to KDOT. There will be a one thousand charge to the county for the returning of the old signs back to our lot.
That's the only charge, though?
Yes.
So this is for approving round two of three?
Yeah. It'll be two of two.
Two of two?
Yeah, there wouldn't be enough funding for three years, we're spending it all in two years. That's why we were.
Does be everything from fourteen east.
Correct, on our federally secondary routes, yeah.
Does this come out of your contractual portion of the budget, or?
Yeah, the one thousand dollars, I'm pretty sure that's where we'll take it from.
I entertain a motion to sign the contract for the signed project in the eastern half of the county, all major connectors east of fourteen highway except RS three eighty-three, from RS one thousand and four to RS three ninety-four? Ninety-four. Amount of one hundred and three thousand, three hundred and one dollars. The one thousand dollar cost to us for returning the signs.
I would so move.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second on the signed project, if there's any further discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the reason why that, there's that exception in there is due to the railroad tracks down in Westfall. Without having drop bars, lights, and audible signals, they cannot include it.
I don't suppose they're gonna put lights and drop bars or get him, get him to fix crossings.
Cost more than the whole project is to do that, so. Then I also have here. This will be on our federal fund exchange, they did an amendment to the original contract, it's gonna be called supplemental number one. To the agreement, which is a master agreement, I'll let you guys have that. I'll need two signed copies of it, but basically what it boils down to is counties are no longer allowed to bank their funds. They need to be removed annually, and that we will no longer be receiving ninety-ten, it will be seventy-five-twenty-five. On our federal dollars exchange.
Well, I would help the state out a little bit more.
That was the original agreement we did back in sixteen, and this will be the one that we need to get approved and signed.
They can do it in monthly, if you want to, you just have to have it out by the end of their physical year, or?
It's the end of September, uh, by September fifteenth.
But when you apply, it has to be used for the project in the application, right? I mean, that's.
What we send the receipts in for.
Yeah.
You know, you can.
You can use it for about anything, really.
Except purchasing equipment.
Yeah.
Capital improvements.
Well, it says upon completion of the transportation project, the county shall notify secretary and allow the secretary to participate in a final review of the project. So it looks to me as if you have to choose the project and then let them review it.
We never have, I guess, we'd send in for our chip seal for the last two or three years now, and they do give us an approval on it.
I think as long as they can verify the works done, that's all that.
Now, this still says ninety percent of the total.
That was the original agreement, this is the supplemental.
So when you receive that money from the state, what, what line item does it get deposited under in your fund?
Comes in general, then we put it back to our bridge fund.
You transfer it, do we transfer that, is that a?
We did the resolution a little bit time ago, so.
Okay. To special bridge?
Yeah, we try to get that money back into bridges, that's. That's where our five-year bridge plan money went to is that federal fund exchange, so.
Uh, I don't think we put it back in special.
Special road?
Put it in that special.
Special road?
Money of the, this special bridges is separate one, so.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Any idea what it's gonna mount to this year, do you have any idea? They decided yet?
No, the money hasn't came in, but I'm sure we'll go down like we have been. Thirty to forty thousand dollars total probably.
I entertain a motion to sign the supplemental agreement number one on the fund exchange with the state.
I so move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
We put it in the special highway.
Special highway?
Cause that's a, because it's an unlevered account, and then we can spend that on any road project, correct?
So what kind of discussions are taking place at the Kansas Association of, um, what is it called, Highway?
Kansas County Highway Association.
Kansas County Highway Association, what kinds of discussions are taking place there as far as pushing for lobbying? On that, on those issues?
It's not well perceived, that's for sure, you know, as far as official lobbying, I don't know if they've got anything in place through the liaison to address that yet or not, but I know there's been numerous discussions at the KDOT level about those funds and even the future of those funds, but, you know, I think what it boils down to is everybody's hurting for money, including KDOT. You know, um.
Maybe about ten or twelve years ago, didn't the federal government make them repay, put money back into the fund because they don't spend their share?
And there's, I know there's several states around that are in big trouble because they never offered this money back to the locals, and they got trouble over that, but. You know. We'd like to see it not go further south than it already has.
Well, it's my understanding that the state was pulling money from their KDOT funds to balance other areas of their budget, I mean.
That's what it sounds like.
Mounts to, basically.
Right. And I guess I'm just asking you, not that this is your responsibility, but you are on the board, right? And just what, you know, what mouthpiece is going there to, cause it, the whole rest of the state, besides a few select counties that have their own internal money, have to be suffering the effects of that. We're giving up six and a half percent of all of our sales tax every year, we're giving up.
I agree.
You know.
You know, and we, the Bureau of Local Projects, which is under KDOT, they are basically on our side also, you know, they're an advocate for the county. Um, and they've done a lot of discussing for us at the KDOT level, you know, I don't believe that KDOT brings us to the table every time that we would like to, you know.
What's the state committee on, for, for KDOT funding, what is that, do you know what that's called? The state committee that heads up any legislation for KDOT? Maybe you could bring that up, what, how often are your board meetings?
Oh, we meet twice a year as a group, and the executive board meets two additional times. And we'll be meeting later this week.
Maybe you could bring that up as, as a point of interest, I mean, one of the things that I, you don't show up in committee when they're in session to tell them and to express while you're there, and it takes a trip to Topeka by whomever on your board. But if you don't show up at that point in time, letters, phone calls, everything else goes more by the wayside, you know, if, if you show up to express that concern when they're in discussion, in, you know, in session, it's much more effective, and I think it's just past time for that to be voiced. I don't know what that committee's called that passes that legislation, but I mean, it's, it's baloney that they can even take the money out of that fund to fund other, less, in my opinion, less important things than infrastructure.
Anything else, Michael?
Uh, yeah, have you guys reviewed the gravel agreement, redone it again? Uh, sorry, my cup here stapled the wrong corner. Uh, essentially, in paragraph one, we moved, removed that two-year additional part in there to where it just becomes due on the date, uh, we chose the March thirty-first of, uh, two thousand and whatever year they decide, one, two, three, four year, whatever, we'll go from there. Uh, changes to where we have six months instead of a hundred and twenty days, and that's a more realistic number to get all the work done that we need to without completely shutting us down from our other projects. And then also the fact that we went from a one dollar, two dollar per cubic yard.
Did you happen to have a conversation with Liz to let, I'm assuming it would be her responsibility to let them know then by the end of the year, that gives us the ninety days?
We've had some discussion, I wanna start as early as the end of November.
That's kinda why we picked March thirty-first, it gives us.
Sooner.
Yeah.
You know. I think it'll streamline it a lot when we keep the expiration date all consistent. We might just have, go through and sort through the year then that way.
So that's basically the only thing that you changed, was the number one and number five?
Uh, I believe so, and then also, there's an area in here that states that, uh, if we just, I think it's number nine. Nope. Uh, we added that, uh. No, it's in five. If the price goes up, we can.
Oh, yeah.
Do a mailing instead of have to send a whole new contract.
It's not in here, and I'm not suggesting that it must be, but do we have some kind of procedure in mind as far as when you sign these leases, we're gonna get an accurate measurement of the active area of the pit, that way it's on record, we don't have to go back and have any discrepancies and abatements and things like that?
It changes annually what your active area is gonna be.
Right, so how are you gonna document that?
Guess every year we'll just have to go see where it is at that point.
And is that gonna be you, or you, or the dozer operator, or?
It'll be a collective effort, I'm sure.
Maybe that should be kept with the, the lease agreement then, I mean, or unless you just want another file full of measurements, but.
I think it's fine, got any contact with any of the people that saw in the meeting that the gravel price had grown, so we adopted it.
Then phone caller too, and then several people call and say they'd like us to explore for some gravel, so.
Howard was in here the other day, thought he might have some.
Do you, do we need a motion not to accept this gravel agreement, or what do we do?
I, I think if you're okay with it, you can just tell him to proceed.
Proceed.
I think it's fine.
Thank you.
I think you're right, getting them all kinda do it at the same time is gonna be a blessing.
I think number four, you might have a wording issue. It says if the seller, if the seller had a stockpile of gravel prior to the commencement of this agreement, which was used during this agreement, I think it, that doesn't make sense. A stockpile of an equal amount will be left in the pit upon the termination of this agreement.
No, the which if used would be if the county went in and used the pile that they already had.
Yes.
So maybe it should say if used during, not which was used, because was is a past tense verb, and basically you're saying, if we use the gravel that's already been piled, we'll put it back, is the lay, I'm just, maybe take out which was and put if used. Just for clarification.
Have we been successful in finding any gravel?
Yeah, we've been finding some, not big amounts, but several different places that showed good prospects for. Right now, he's, uh, up in Osborne County testing for some guy. He was testing down in our county here, and he said, I'd like you to go up and test some ground, I've got up there, there was some gravel taken out and so, see what we got up there, more likely, we're probably more, unless we're really getting by, but like I say, he said he'd like to sell us some if we need it, and so he's looking up there, see what we. So he's looking up there, see what we can find. So far, oh, he's found some, but not any big prospects, so... And he could sue there while he's coming down your way. I think they talked to Max over there. He took them around and they're going to look around, Barnard there, different places in that area between Barnard and Lincoln and do some prospecting over there for different locations, so... We had a little luck anyway, getting, locating some there. We'll have some to use up there instead of have to truck clear across the county.
A lot more productive to make two loads an hour than a one load an hour or something.
Yeah. Yeah. Be a lot more efficient for us.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, M three-one-one uh, shows, uh, what we used it last year and this year so far, and then, uh, patchwork on there if you guys would like to review that.
Looked like the rocks rolled pretty good, didn't they?
Yeah, I think so.
Looked like the hood looked, they've done it.
It's kind of, it's room's up enough and stuff that worked pretty good. We'll get a little more moisture wherever we get it laid down a little better, but...
So these requests were made during the, greater operation, is that what?
Various employees, yes.
Very, very simple. So these marks out here are, the things are, what are these?
Work that needs to be done.
Work that needs to be done. For a colorblind person, it's not much good. There's, to have the reds and the oranges. Now, I can tell, I can tell greens and blues and reds apart, but if you start the shades of them, I can't tell which is which.
Forty different colors. There's a lot of them that are very close to each other.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's, it's always bugged me, but people can see different shades, and I don't, I don't, I don't see a shade. I just see, it's either green or it's not green.
Yeah, in Texas, shoulder down the railroad, Neil Mahal would come down there. We were driving, it kind of had a bypass around Liberty there where we were staying. All of a sudden Neil went to our, "What is it? What is it?" I was looking all around trying to, "What you talking about?" I said, "What? What? The light, the light." Well, the stoplight was laying this way instead of up and down, and he couldn't figure which was green or red because he was colorblind. He didn't know what to do.
Texas does that.
Yeah. It never dawned on me for years that, that people, especially artistic people, you know? And I, I never could figure out why they would, how they could do that, you know? And then it suddenly dawned on me that, you know, there isn't one color of orange. Many shades of orange, but to me, there's, yeah.
So is this the extent of the map that is uploaded to the program? There are no other, there are no county roads on it?
When you zoom in-
Oh.
There is.
Okay. This is just-
In the street view map, but when you go to the aerial view map, you do not get the street names.
And are you able to curtail this so you can combine some of those for them? They don't have like eighteen thousand options, but, like all these ones, sign downs, sign graffiti, sign inspections, sign inventory, sign, like can you, can they just mark it?
They can pick that from a drop-down box. It just, it makes it quick and easy. And if it's not one of those things, they tap on the other and then they describe everything in their comments anyways, so...
So, like, for example, in this year, in this month, we have mostly reports of piles needing burned. And then trees needing cut and trimmed, which is probably a good time of year, except for when it's blistering cold. So how, how do you respond to that? What is the procedure? If the blade operator types in and says, "Okay, three piles need burned on this road and this section needs trimmed for this mile." Do, who coordinates that? Who, who goes?
I'll do it to an extent because they're going to have a bunch of snow on the ground.
Yeah, burning those, do three of the guys that wanted to burn some pile, and I said, "No." Not until we get a good snow cover. It's going to stay for a month of moisture, so-
But I'm asking, do, do, do you get reinforcements to burn, or is the blade operator supposed to burn, or how, how does that work?
Yeah, blade operators, and if we got truck rudder and stuff and it's, uh, not, can't haul gravel this time of year or whatever, they'll go out and help different areas. Or help with the blade bin, or find another area to go burn, whatever.
So is there another, like, this is the report of requests that were made. Is there a completion report as far as, yes, two of these nine piles were burned, or one of these sections of tree trimming that needs done out of five was finished?
There is a completion report.
Well, that'll be interesting to see further on in the year. Or like for two thousand seventeen, all, all these requests, do we know how many of them have been addressed, or?
I believe it shows up there, a hundred and, was it a hundred and seventeen?
Oh, I'm sorry, completed. It just doesn't say which ones though, right? Because it-
I don't believe it does.
Says a hundred and seventeen requests, eighty-one completed. And most of them were culvert repairs and bridge cleanouts. So is that, do you send your bridge crew to every one of those, to every?
Good majority. Right now, we are because we're down a backhoe.
We get, the old backhoe or another backhoe, whatever we do with that. Ran into, or we can send the blade guys on their route out if they got some problems like that. With the spare backhoe and work on that kind of stuff, or the bridge crew's working on a bigger project.
So this says clean ditch, and I'm assuming they call in, or they put in the request that wherever they say their, their ditch needs cleaned, and then you would do the one call. So are you just doing that? Do, do you go out and check where they said they want it done, or do you just make the call based on what they told you for information? Or how much running back and forth are you doing if they have a request in for something like that?
Usually I want to go look at it, make sure. Because I run onto so many things. It's not, what they're telling me is not quite what I see it as, so I want to check it before I put a one call in to make sure everything's covered. And this is what they really need to do. Or they just want a whole new deal and not try to fix something. Stuff like that. Like I say, I want to double check it before.
Isn't there an option to like upload a picture so that if they're on-
Yeah.
Thirty-first Road and they want this ditch cleaned, now can you access that picture?
Yeah, it's... Picture doesn't do everything for you, though.
I understand that, but if I'm a blade operator and I-
Like I'm pulling ditches or something, you know? If it's a mile-long project, pictures aren't going to justify what needs to be done. You know, you, you might be able to use the picture at a culvert or something like that where there's some issues a little bit better, but...
But it doesn't cost us to do one call?
No.
So basically, you could put the one call in ahead of time, and then once they're already started on their little project, if they wanted to do a mile of, of cleaning a ditch, you could go out and check on the work that they're doing. But you don't necessarily need to make two trips, one to check before the one call and one to go after the one call.
Well, if they're just going to do a portion and then decide to do more, I'll have to put in another one call and stuff. And if you go to putting in too many, I'll send some of those guys out there to locate them because they got pretty teed off with some people in the past. It was calling me in. They just need for a small area and they'd call in a whole mile or two miles and they was out there in the day like this marking them. They weren't very happy, so I want to make sure that this is covering the area and it's covering everything at one time. Makes them come back out there and redo it, a bunch of stuff.
I think where he goes out, there are very few miles that don't have culverts and stuff, and he probably goes out and checks to see if the culvert needs replaced or reset, or-
Yeah, like I say.
Or if they're working in the south half-mile, he goes out and looks, he may see something in the north half-mile that needs done.
Yeah, while they're right there.
Yeah, so they can get located before they're right there.
So what-
Or in the next mile, whatever.
What can we do then to provide a little better training for you to have to do? I mean, it's not feasible for one person to cover five hundred miles of gravel road and additional five hundred miles of dirt road for that kind of a procedure. And I did like an item, like a analysis of the last two years of how many culverts were repaired and how many ditch, how many, it, I didn't do the length of, um, ditch cleanouts, but I just did like the num, the quantity. And so what I'm seeing is certain areas, it must be those particular operators are uh, more progressive about doing that, okay? So you might have one operator that did seven ditch cleanouts and another operator that didn't do any. So how can we get everyone on the same page to say, you know, every so often, every, you know, I don't, I don't know the specifics. I'm not claiming to have knowledge in an area where I don't, but let's just say, for example, a particularly highly traveled road where you're throwing off a lot of gravel, where the road is widening, and I'll use my road again as an example because I live west of the school in Sylvan. And so that road just keeps getting wider. Um, we just keep kind of pushing the windrows out, and then the dirt, um, kind of just makes a little barrier and you lose a lot of gravel off the sides. So for example, how often does someone really need to be in there scraping that back up on? You know, is that a once every five year?
That's what we were talking to hear about. Where we're, we got the rollers, tried to roll going and started over there where it broke down. At Barnard on that new gravel, rolled that, and we started some other roads, following those edges and rolling. And that's what we like to do, is try to get around, but we kind of got to coordinate with the different blade operators and the equipment and what's broke down, what's running and all this stuff. To do a lot of that. Some of it they can do on their own, but like I say, and some of them are, like I say, have to keep working at, you need to do this, but uh, some of them are more reluctant to go do it, and some of them don't feel comfortable doing, so kind of wait until somebody else is there to help them, kind of show them what they need to do to start with, though.
Especially if you're going to have to have a roller there and stuff, you have to be able to schedule other people and run rollers.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So do you have any training ideas for this year, like you did last year?
That's it right now. I don't know whether they're going to, some of the way they talked and think that much of the one they had last year, but yeah, they said there were some ideas, but some of them they didn't feel was geared to what we do here. It was kind of for a different area of the state or whatever that didn't work here. And the instructor even said that when we went out and actually did something. He said, "Oh, this works entirely different than where I'm used to working," so it's hard to, people kind of have to learn a lot of this just on their own. I want to try to sit down with some of the operators here on days like this and kind of go over some of the things. This is what I expect you to have done.
Do we have a county, um, not that we created it necessarily, but do we give a handout for, for a manual or some sort of training? You know, like KDOT puts out your basic, you know, I don't know what you want to call it, a manual, I guess, is, you know, maintaining manual or something like that?
Yeah, we've, we've had, we pass them around and stuff to the guys that have access to that stuff. I'd like too many of them to look at it and have that set right.
So how, so how do we fix that? Because I, I see what you're saying.
Keep on them, like I say, until, yeah.
Do you think this might be a good tool to say, "Okay, you know, blade operators D, C, and F all did, you know, five ditch cleanouts in the last six months, but operators A, Z, and L didn't do any." So then can you, you know, call on them and say, "Hey, I noticed that you didn't choose any ditches that need cleaned out. Surely there's got to be one on your route."
Yeah.
Is that a way that you could maybe isolate some of the issues?
Keep working and, and yeah. Everything enters into that too, what else they're doing, their weather conditions. Some of it may be too wet, they can't clean out, or stuff like that, or some of the places that, uh, we have a problem with it. We have to get everything all lined up and get the people, other people there to help with the loader, backhoe, and stuff like that, so... Some of that has to just all get, try to get coordinated with them. But like last year, so well, we couldn't do a lot of those until it was late fall or winter, before we got around to doing a lot of it.
There, it'd be nice to have every blade operator do about five to seven miles of dirt every year.
Which still puts you on a very spread rotation when you have a hundred miles, but certain roads-
You know, that's up to seventy miles throughout the year. You know, per year, seventy miles. You know, and having somebody available to operate the loader, the roller, or whatever it may be, and you know, the time of year makes a big difference. You know, we don't like to clip edges and bring some of that gravel back up in the middle of the summer when the vegetation's growing good and whatnot, because it just, it takes a lot longer for it to dry down and dissipate, you know? If we can do it here in the winter months, it works a lot better when the grass is dry and everything and the ground is able to blow out of it, you know, with the winds and everything, and-
Haven't we ever thought about trying to contract out some of that help just for a season? You know, if, if you know that during this particular season you can pull more ditches or, you know, do where you need that additional equipment and operator to contract someone to be available for a month, you give them, you know, every, every day, they're going to have somewhere they can be, and you schedule according to where they can be available. Know what I'm saying?
For contractors that have to become an employee to operate our equipment though, do they? I don't know. We haven't necessarily talked directly about that, I guess.
They're, yeah, if they're running our equipment, they wouldn't be contracted. They would be considered an employee.
Another thing, like I say, harvest time, planting time, some of this one, there's a lot of trucks and machinery on the road. We don't like to do a bunch of that and be in there, interfere with the public out there on the roads trying to get their work done too, so we kind of have to arrange it according to what the season is and who's working where and stuff too. Keep from interfering with, uh, harvest trucks and equipment, stuff like that.
Are there companies out there that just come and do, like, they would do bridge cleanout, for example, and clear the brush from some of these smaller culverts that's been stacked up and kind of creating a wash against the side walls and?
Contracted a local company to remove brush and stuff like that from channels, yes.
Who was that?
Uh, Rodney Larson Construction.
What, what kind of a project was it? Was it expensive? How much did we do?
No, we got a-
Most of it was brush cleanup on low water crossings and stuff like that.
Water crossings, low water bridges.
If you've got a big excavator, they can go in there.
So is that something that's feasible to try to get us ahead in a season like this?
If they're available, I guess. You know, I guess it depends on what their schedule is, because I know we had to wait sometimes, what, two, three months for him to get in to be able to do it to work around his schedules, so...
Because he's building ponds and everything else, terraces and whatnot, repairing stuff like that, so he's not available just whenever we want one. It's hard to find somebody.
Well, I think this program is a good place to start. Well, I think this program is a good place to start, you can at least pinpoint some areas. I can already see where we're accumulating more dots here, you know, and then you go by color and repairs needed. But maybe that's something we can discuss is where we need that additional help, that it's not worth us paying our own help. That we've already have, you know, that we already have.
Anything else?
Did anyone make you aware of the motion that we made last week to create a plan of action for the year?
Dawn had mentioned it to me, yes, gave me a copy of it.
Thank you, Dawn.
Everybody else got anything?
Thank you all, have a wonderful week and thank you.
Got a little bit of motion.
Yeah, hoping to not to help out a little bit.
It was actually a little muddy there with the bump today when I was appearing this morning, but.
Yeah, I have to change anyway.
Yeah, picked up on tractor tires besides manure anyway. Well, good morning, Deborah.
I didn't print every description again because I feel like that's what I just keep doing. But what I did do was I redid the office manager one, um, the, uh, some of the spelling errors that you had seen, um, some corrections there. And I did visit um with them regarding the bullet about assists with maintaining a special project list. And whether or not they did do that, they said that they um probably did that years ago when they had a special project. Job title person and it was an obsolete function and no, it wasn't something that they did and probably should be eliminated. So I did remove that um from there because they did say that there is no, there is no list, no one is doing that. So there's no sense having that. And what I did was I printed two of the other second pages to them. Remember we talked about the weight limits and some of those requirements, when we were kind of going through some of those things. Um, Michael pointed out and I highlighted for you, on all of their job descriptions for all of their personnel, including the landfill, noxious weed. We added that statement, um, the ability to adapt to changing technology. Uh, Michael said that he felt like that, um, that was something that was important for all of those staff members. So we did go ahead and um include that and instead of printing off seven more. I just gave you a couple to show you what we did, hope that that was okay. And other than that, you guys didn't really have any other changes for the um Public Works Department?
I think we got a little off topic though, you were saying about a special project list and that that's obsolete because we don't have a special fund and all of that anymore the way that we did with, but I think what, what I was getting at anyhow is to maintain a project list is an essential function of any management position in that department. The, the list doesn't.
Right, last, last week you asked about this one, you know, um, where is the list, um? Why wasn't on other, just uh other departments, you know, and, and whether or not they actually really did that? And Michael said it's not something that she does, that is not part of her job, she does not have a list, she does not create a list.
But did you add that to his job description because someone has to do it?
No one really decided, is that what you guys want? I, I guess I wasn't.
Someone has to do it, so if, if, if I core a request, you know, the list of jobs, like current jobs or jobs that are on the queue. Then who's going to provide that because I have done.
I, I guess the conversation that I recall is having in the notes that I made was regarding this bullet on this job description. And whether or not she did that.
No, it was that I said that she'd been moved from marginal functions to essential functions because it needs to be something that's accessible. So if, if Dawn, as the Freedom of Information Officer, requests that, it comes to her.
Again, she does not do that, Michael said that is not a function that she is performing. There is not a special project list, years ago they had some kind of rainy day list, they don't have that kind of list, that is not what she's doing.
We can take out the word special, I don't think special applies to anything. I'm just saying a project list, be it ongoing projects, completed projects and or future projects.
So you want us now to add that to her description?
I think it should be on each management position, it should be the Director of Public Works, the Office Manager and the Supervisor of the Department should all know, here's the list, check that one off because we finished that one in February. And this is the one that we're getting, we're getting geared up for, you know, we added, I'll, I'll call it, I don't know, what was it, Thirtieth Road? Is that the one that we did here the last quarter of the year, you know, going into last quarter of the year? That would have been something added onto the list and it actually made the priority list. So we, we transferred funds from other uh line items to be able to pay for that. And we moved manpower up there immediately to do that job, we saw it as necessary. So that would be part of that list and in other words, if I called in or if I did a core request and wanted to know what project they're working on, there's no way to find out. And if there was a list that being maintained of completed projects, then you just ask for that list. And it's, oh, my bridge is, you know, sixteenth on the list, I'm not gonna be able to cross it for the next year or two, you know? That kind of a thing is inaccessible at the moment and that was, that was where the conversation was going, not, you can take the word special completely out of it. That, if that doesn't apply anymore, I wouldn't call them special, I would just say project list, which we are now having one created. So that will be there and I would say that the Office Manager should have access to it because.
I would think that those, everything they're doing gets put onto that mobile three one one and I think there's a it showed on there how many had been done and he didn't do a print out of which ones had been done. I think that probably should exist in there actually.
Uh, yeah, I hope so.
So what do you want and whose description do you want it on? That's my question, I guess then.
Well, see, under essential functions for the Office Manager, it says makes budgetary recommendations for both capital and operational purchases. If she has the authority to make recommendations for the budget, she should certainly have access to the list of what we're working on. That doesn't make sense if she doesn't.
I don't think that she does though.
Does what?
There isn't a list.
I don't, no, I don't think that she makes budget recommendations.
Well, that's not, that's the second to last bullet point under essential function, under essential function.
Essential probably shouldn't be there. Cause I think all she does is.
Maybe for things that she utilizes.
I guess it depends on how, how you, how you analyze that, that bullet, you know, um, is she making all the budgetary decisions like Dawn said? No, she's not, what she's doing is, is um.
She's the one that's keeping the books.
Coding their purchases and keeping the books and things like that.
She knows what the balances of those lines are.
But like, things that she needs or things that she knows that she needs and ordering, ordering some supply, she has, she does help with that. But the overall budget itself, you know, in the broader sense, that's Michael and Bob's responsibility, but she does have some.
Okay, like for example, if we don't have this list that she has access to or if she doesn't have access to it. Bullet point number four, assists with completing and maintaining state bridge project paperwork.
Yes.
How would she know which bridge is coming up to do the paperwork on it if she didn't have access to know?
He tells her which ones, he gives her the paperwork to complete.
But I think you guys are missing the point, if we're always relying on what one person says on their whim and there's not a working project list, then none of us have any real knowledge.
Like I said, where do you want this list? Where, where do you want this, this function to lie?
Last week under being for the Supervisor and the Director of Public Works, definitely, I mean, that's who's creating the list. And then, and then, um, you know, editing it, so to speak.
I think, you know, if the list exists in three one one, she would have access to it.
And, and so that just brings me to the question, who, who's editing the three one one software? Because, you know, is one person gonna be doing that or they all having access to it, you know?
I would guess they all have access to it, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know the details of that.
Someone else standing around with the projects done.
Exactly, so wouldn't that be her secretarial work to be?
I would think so.
I would think so too.
I mean, I would think any of them could, but I would think.
All right, great, but if Bob is going out to check before every one call and then to check during the project and potentially after the project or making recommendations, you know, he's quote unquote on the road, he won't be doing it, if she's in the office.
I would say it is, but I don't know. I would say he could if he wanted to.
I would say she maintains the working project list, it's, it's a working project list, you have ones that you've completed. You have ones that you're in the middle of, you have ones that you need to order things for or do paperwork for. And then you have the ones way in the future that you hope to get to, but that may be, you know, changing with the times or the the upcoming unexpected events. I would call it a working project list, not a special.
So you, do you guys want that added on all three job descriptions now?
Uh, that, I'm sure they can, I, I would say it's already in existence, so I guess it could be in the job description.
Yes, please.
Maintain a project list.
Okay.
Add one there on that three one one stuff, so.
Well, yeah, that and the difference is, the report that we got and Deborah, you probably didn't see it. But it basically says, you know, certain operators have requested that these piles need burned. Other ones have requested that, um, I don't know what I did with it, others have requested that, you know, other, certain culverts. And here are all the little marks on the map, right? So then you can look at it and say, okay, this is an issue, that's an issue, where it is and what it needs. But those are being input by the individual operators. There needs to be someone saying, well, we're gonna get to this one first and then we go to that one. And these are the, it, these are, this is the equipment that we need to schedule and these are the materials that we need to buy and in this particular order. That, I believe, is the essential foundation of what is lacking in the efficiency that we do not experience right now. And if we can get that moving forward, which this program is definitely gonna help with in my opinion, then there will be this working project list and it will need maintained to some extent. And I would think that those supervisor positions, any management position, I mean, she's called the Office Manager. I would think that she has the ability to maintain that, edit it, however you wanna word that. Once it's done, she checks it off as done and when someone calls in, she can say, oh, we're done with that project, we've moved on to this location. As it stands right now, it just seems like everyone has to make six phone calls to find out who has the knowledge. And then we never know which person has that knowledge because Bob just said he's running back and forth to a particular job site maybe three, four times.
And if you look at that book he's got there, it's got all the projects in it. He carries that book around with him all the time.
But, but does Michael look at that book and work off of the same notes?
And they go out and look at things together and they discuss projects and.
So we will have that to all three, are we done then with the Highway Department for now, again?
I would say.
Okay, law enforcement.
Has Michael looked through these?
Um, they have, well, Dustin did, I believe Mike did as well.
Did they recommend any changes?
Um, we, I made the ones that they did recommend, I'm sure that if they look at again, they might find something else and we can do that again. But whatever they recommended, I did make for changes.
The only one that I was concerned about a little was a Communications Officer. When that jailer is not on duty, that Communications Officer does have some responsibility to keep an eye on the prisoners, right? And where, where does, where does that?
Under marginal performs jail security checks as needed is listed on there and it does say assist with food and medical services in the jail.
Okay, so that is covering that for that.
Yeah, yeah, I can ask Dustin if he might think of some more specific wording, if you would like me to.
Well, it doesn't matter, I just wanted to make sure that we were covered with that.
I don't think they do anymore, I think they call those.
The deputy.
So basically, they are just monitoring from the monitors?
From the cameras, um, and like, I think most of the time when it's like mealtime. I think most of the time the deputy is the one who takes the meals upstairs, um, I think that maybe in the past they did, but I think as a lady, it's more the deputy. It's kind of somebody. Yeah, um, I think sometimes it depends on what's going on, somebody has to stay on the radio. I know that sometimes the Communication Officer will run the errands, um, if they need stuff when the jailers, you know, off duty that day, maybe pick up supplies and things like that.
That's my question, are, are we, is the Communications Officer and the jailer on, are they on shift at the same time?
There has to be, yeah, always, there's never a Communication Officer not there, there has to be somebody sitting there twenty-four hours a day.
Jailers on it.
So the Communications Officer is technically dispatch, but the jailer doesn't do any dispatch?
No, not this one, no, in the past, some, some of them.
Two people on shift at the same time, a jailer and a Communications Officer?
Yes. Only the days that.
One jailer.
Only the time that the jailer's on duty.
Daylight, so right now is basically.
He works forty hours a week, four tens.
But they're both at the jail.
He does laundry and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, they're both at, yes.
What is the pay difference between a communication, Communications Officer and a jailer?
I don't have the, I don't have that with me, not that much.
You wanna know what?
What the pay difference is between being a jailer and a Communications Officer? Because what we're saying is to be the Communications Officer, you don't necessarily have to have any education or experience, but you have to get certified within six months.
They have to take a class, yes.
Okay, but the jailer doesn't have to do that at all?
They do, they go, they do have a class through KLE, I think it's through KLET C, that's like a week long that they send them to.
This just says you have to have a high school diploma or GED and a driver's license.
We send them for that after.
First aid and CPR.
Yes, we send them to that, as we send the dispatchers to that class as well. They don't have to have that when we hire them, we send them for that training. If they've already had it, that would be terrific, but in the past, most of the jailers that we've ever had have not had that. And we send them to the jailer class and it might not, it might only be two days, I can't remember for sure, I'd have to look it up. I wanna say the jailers make it around twelve or twelve and a half.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay, thank you.
Thirteen and the dispatch, or the Communications rooms from thirteen to thirteen eighty.
Most all of them have been here. I, I don't know that they've all been here within the five, but they've all been here quite a few years and the jailer is probably newer staff than they are. So there's a little longevity built up for some of them. But there's not a huge pay difference.
Wrong, the serving room is about thirteen eighty.
Thank you.
I didn't see anything else, Deborah, that I thought was outlawing.
We said this is one of the ones where we would do the physical.
I will ask Dustin about whether or not he thinks that there should be some different language regarding what the Communication Officers' responsibilities really are with the jail. I'll ask him about that and your question about, well, we said law enforcement, health department.
Well, they don't do home health anymore, so maybe not.
They, they said, yeah, Bud said he, he wouldn't suggest unless they were going to clients' homes and doing the home house.
Law enforcement and Highway Department are the three, right?
Yes. Is where we were looking at, okay. And in terms of law enforcement, I would say definitely the deputies and the jailer and then it would be probably. We probably could, and I could see if you didn't want to do dispatch, you know, um, but to be consistent with the department, I would say all of them. But I'm, that would probably be a question to see where Mike and Dustin feel about that.
So does that mean that the Communications Officer, whoever is on the night shift, is basically doing the jailer's duties on that, in that?
It, it depends on how you.
I mean, there's not much to do at night, I understand that, but is that?
Starts getting rowdy, um, loud or there's a problem or they need something.
Officer to.
Then she'll holler probably at the deputy and see where he's at and if the deputy's right there in town, he'll come up and take care of it. It might be that it, that she might buzz up and he or she might buzz up and see what's going on, you know, she can see on, he or she can see on the camera.
Legally have to have those two people there at the same time?
What do you mean?
You have to have an emergency.
Somebody has.
I know you have to have the dispatcher twenty-four seven, but I'm saying, in essence, you know, we're basically looking for another jailer right now. But if we offered more pay to someone who's willing to take on that. But if we offered more pay to someone who's willing to take on that duty while they're there as a Communications Officer, is that a possibility?
It's kinda hard for them to do both because it's one thing if it's three in the morning and there's nothing going on, they can maybe buzz upstairs and see what's going on with the inmate. But in the middle of the day, when there's a ton of radio traffic and everything else going on, they can't take them to court, they can't take them to the doctor, they don't have time to be cooking meals and go to the hospital giving them, they have to sit there at that radio.
The jailer takes them to court?
Yes, he will, he will, he will typically.
Now, some, some.
Or.
It just depends on whether or not the jailer is on duty at the time.
And sometimes the circumstances between, is there one person he's bringing over or is he bringing three over? Then him and the deputy will bring them over and like if they get done with one, he'll take them back over. If they're just being released, he might take them back over, you know, sometimes it's only him, sometimes it's him and a deputy, it depends upon the circumstance. On, on who's working.
And then they also do the booking, they book them in and out.
And that's time consuming, photographs, um, fingerprinting, all of that.
Laundry.
Yeah, cleaning upstairs and. Does that help?
Are we still looking for a deputy?
Yes. Um, i- if, if the idea was can we eliminate a position, I don't see how. We probably need more help where the, where the prisoners are concerned, not less, that's the, kind of the reason why they need somebody else because just having one person just isn't cutting it.
No, all I was saying is, well, yeah, I guess it is eliminating by saying if we're still looking for a jailer and we haven't found one, can, if we were gonna pay a whole nother employee and benefits, can we just up the night shift pay for the Communications Officer to be responsible for both positions overnight? I mean, I'm assuming they're on shifts.
I don't know if he was gonna put on a jailer for the night, I think he was gonna put on a jailer to cover the other days.
I, I think the, the, initially the thought was, the ones working four, four days a week, that they might do three, four, three, four, three, four.
Are they doing four 10-hour days?
He, the one person does four 10-hour days.
If they had two, they could go to 12s.
They could go to 12s and they could go four, one, through the other and then flip flop back and forth, something like that.
And right now, there's like only certain days that they allow visitations, so the jailer has to be there the day that they, days that they allow visitations because the jailer takes and he's up and down for visitations.
And, yeah, so someone has to be there that time.
And like if something happened.
In addition to Communications.
If something happened and the jailer wasn't there, I, there have been times they've had to not have visitation or the deputy has to do that. Well, then the deputy can't be out answering calls and can't be patrolling because he's helping with visitation.
I didn't see anything else in there, I mean, I read them on here.
Okay, um, I'll visit with Dustin and make sure, him and Mike, and make sure that this is adequate, um, have a look at that one specifically. I'll make the other changes for the other one and I guess that we're down to, I think, just the courthouse staff and EMS. So I'll print one of those off, print for you, print for you, email for you, yes, please, all right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Alexis, you got it tomorrow, did you dream to hear you got something for us?
I have nothing today.
All right, nothing else coming for this board, we will adjourn until next Monday, the, what, 29th, I believe.
Are we meeting on Wednesday again too, Dawn, or?
I, I would say yes, as of right now, it's potential that they could be done.